Hello, everyone. Welcome to the September meeting of the City of Binghamton Planning Commission. My name is Nick. And I'm currently the chairman of this commission, which is comprised of local community members tasked with reviewing site plans and special use permits for consistency with the standards and criteria set forth in the City of Binghamton code. Based on our total number of planning commission members, four members must be to constitute a quorum. Tonight, we have six members, which means we do have a quorum and can proceed. First item on our agenda is roll call Mario DeFolvio. Joe D'Angelo. Chris Judge.
Here I am, rocking like a hurricane.
Thank you. Kelly Weiss.
Present.
Manny Priest is absent and Steve Cipressa. All right. Second item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We had August minutes loaded to base camp. Anybody see any revisions needed to those minutes? Errors? Comments? And if not, is there a motion to approve them?
All second Joe's motion.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Chris, all in favor? All right, six in favor, zero opposed. All right, next item on our agenda are seeker determinations. In this portion of our meeting, the planning commission will be reviewing documentation provided by applicants for the first time. Applicants will be called to the microphone where they will be asked to make a presentation describing their plans to the commission. Commission members may then ask questions of the applicant to clarify any items that are unclear. And after all questions have been answered, the commission will deliberate and then either set a public hearing date for the project or request additional information before proceeding. To all our applicants that will be presenting tonight, we ask that you please state your name and address for our records before beginning your presentation. And we ask that any member of your team who will be speaking, please give their name and address for our public record. All right, tonight, our first applicant is Charlie Ackerman. The project address is 23 East Clinton Street. And this is a site plan review and special use permit for the conversion of a portion of the ground floor of an existing building into two two-bedroom dwelling units resulting in five total dwelling units in the C1 service commercial district. Welcome. All right.
Hello, thank you all. My name is Charlie Ackerman. I live at 192 Front Street, Binghamton, 13905. I assume that you all have copies of the plans. I'm looking to add two two-bedroom apartments on the first floor of 23 East Clinton. It is, has a 30-foot commercial setback as required. And yeah, it'll be two two-bedroom apartments, about 800 square foot apiece.
All right. Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
All right.
Any questions?
Any questions? Chris?
Yeah, this is based on some of the comments in the staff report. Can you clarify on the record what the plans are for garbage disposal plans, the property?
Binghamton blue bags.
Okay. I don't, without Tito being here, I don't know what the rules are. I know some places, there's a minimum, you have to have dumpsters and enclosed containers.
I, I believe that Binghamton blue bags are acceptable for this particular use. The there is really nowhere to put a dumpster. The lot lines are right there. And so.
Okay. You'll be coming before us at some point in the future for the public hearing. If we hear different from anybody in the city administration that blue bags is not sufficient. You may want to just brainstorm a plan B, just in case we learn more details.
Sure.
Okay.
But will they be in containers though, the blue bags?
Again, it's a zero lot line building. I'd have absolutely nowhere to put a container. It, I mean, the it's a row building.
So the blue bags would be outside, just sitting there?
Bags would be put on the curb on Tuesday as for downtown Binghamton.
Where would they be before that, though?
In the apartments. It's only a two-bedroom apartment. I can't imagine that. Yeah.
But there'll be garbage cans like outside for them to put the bags in?
No.
Okay.
No, it's just like the rest of the city. And this is a C1 district with a zero lot line building. I mean, I could put the cans on the curb, but I'm not sure that the city would like me to do that. I, it's a two-bedroom apartment. One city bag should do a week for a two-bedroom apartment. It manages.
This is just a big, like, there's a big rat problem right now in the city, so it's just something to be concerned about for you guys.
If you guys have any suggestions, I'm open to it. But again, with a zero lot line building, I don't know where I could possibly put them that would make that work. But I'm open to suggestions if anyone has any ideas, but I really don't know what I could do with that. And I mean, I of course want to do anything I can to stop rats, for God's sake. And I don't want rats in my building at all. But, you know, I'm converting a hundred-year-old building.
So the plan basically in the lease, it'll say, take your trash out on Tuesdays.
That is correct.
And don't put it on the curb any other days.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So I'm looking here at the staff report. There are three existing apartments already. So are the existing tenants just keeping their blue bags inside the apartments until the night before garbage pickup?
Absolutely, yes. And I'm absolutely not trying to be difficult. If anyone got a plan, I'm open to it. I'm not a huge fan of the Binghamton blue bag system personally, but you know, it's a different story, I suppose.
Nick?
Yeah.
Let me ask a different question. Also based on some of the comments in the staff report. Staff is recommending a fence or landscape buffer along the northern property line of 19 East Clinton Street to prevent encroachment by tenants on the neighboring parking area. Is this something you'd be willing to amend in a plan?
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. How many cars use the parking area currently and how many more can you accommodate?
How many can be accommodated? I mean, there are six car, there's six spots right now, and I don't think that another one could be accommodated. No. None of the spots are being used by the current tenants. The, my understanding is that I have to have parking for this, so these spots will be associated to the tenant. The existing tenant, I don't need to find parking.
The wording here is ambiguous. If it's, you need two spots, you need two more spots. I just want to make sure we're clear on that, so.
It was my understanding that I need two spots that the existing, that the existing tenants.
And you've got two spots today.
For them, yes.
Thank you. That was thing throwing me as well is that I felt like we needed two more. And then based on the answer you gave, it sounded like we were topped out as far as parking. And I was thinking, where are these additional people going to go? It sounds like that's not a problem then.
No, yeah, I mean, where the, the existing current tenants do not have parking in their lease. They lease spots around the corner.
All right. Any other questions? Comments, concerns? So at this time, there's no plan to repave the parking lot outside?
It was repaved.
Oh, it was repaved.
It was just repaves this summer.
Oh, great. So it looks a little better than the picture we probably haven't.
Just, just got it done. And if you guys did see the beautiful mural that I just had painted on the side of it. When you come across the Clinton Street Bridge, Sedar, a local artist, made an absolutely gorgeous mural on it. I commissioned it just a couple of months ago.
All right. All right.
And there will be an opening for the mural next first Friday. If anybody wants to come by, the snacks, everyone's invited, please come by.
Excellent. All right, if there's no other questions, comments, concern? I'll make a motion that the proposal involves the reuse of an existing commercial building, which is a type-two action, and that no further environmental review is required. All right, seconded by Steve, all in favor? All right, six in favor, zero opposed. And I'm like a motion to schedule a public hearing for the project at 5:25 at our October meeting. Second by Kelly, all in favor? All right, six in favor, zero opposed.
Great, thank you all very much. I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you. All right, our next seeker determination is for the applicant Owen Bly. Project address is 33 Court Street. And this is a site plan review for the conversion of the second floor of an existing mixed-use building into three two-bedroom dwelling units resulting in four total dwelling units in the C2 Downtown Business District. Welcome.
Thank you. I guess the first thing I wanted to address the plans that I had provided to Tito. Have four new apartments going in for a total of five in the building. It seems as if that got mixed up in the description for the email that I sent to me.
Okay.
But regardless, yes, the proposal is three two-bedroom apartments on the second floor of 33 Court Street. In combination with one studio apartment, which would total five for the building.
All right. And it looks like no exterior changes are being proposed?
No, sir.
So it's all in interior?
Yes.
Painting the facade at all, or?
Yeah, I've already done that. I repainted the, the front facade. That was part of a separate project.
Okay. Great.
Actually, we did all the trim too. There was rotting and peeling trim, so the front facade was a separate project, but that's been completed.
Great. All right, Chris?
Not clear from reading the staff report. What, what's the current status of the, you're turning the second floor into these apartments? What is, what's currently up there or what was up there?
It's a vacant floor.
Okay, like it was created as commercial space or?
It was owner occupied, completely vacant. It's just a 4,500 square foot hardwood floor.
Okay. And as we asked the previous applicant for their thing, can you spell out for us on the record what the garbage disposal plan is?
Yeah, we do have a dumpster behind the building. In addition to the dumpster, there, you know, there obviously is trash pickup, but everyone that's in the building now uses the dumpster out back.
A little confused, hopefully you can help me out here where
Sure.
I'm looking at the floor plan and the staff report together. Just read quickly from the summary of application. Seeking permission for the conversion of the second floor to three two-bedroom units, which I see on the floor plan, but also see a studio apartment. Is the studio apartment existing and was owner occupied, or is that going to be new as part of this plan?
It's going to be new as part of this plan. The existing apartment in that building is on the floor above it, on the third floor. So the, the four apartments on the floor plans are net new, and it would create five total in the building. The existing is on the third floor above it. Yes, sir.
Let's see, and you've got a dumpster in the is it a common space behind the building?
There's a parking lot behind the building that I have an easement through to access both a freight elevator and my back garage. And at the edge of that garage, there's actually several dumpsters. Several of the neighbors in the area split the cost for the dumpsters and we all use them.
Gotcha. So they're not on your property, but they are dumpsters, you're.
One of them may actually be on my property. I'd have to check the lines specifically, but there's several dumpsters back there. One of them would probably be within my line right outside the garage, but there's three of them lined back, lined up back there.
Okay.
And so is your lot the one on Water Street then that's bordering Nurчи's? Or is it, think of a different parcel?
That, that, no, my lot is along Court Street, but directly behind it is 166 Water Street, which is a parking lot. It was burnt, previously a building that burnt down, converted to a parking lot. And part of my back boundary, along with the easement that I've been granted through that lot, goes 20 feet into the, into the parking lot.
So like behind it then, kind of, if you're coming from that direction on Water Street, you pass through the other lot to get to yours?
I'm not clear on your question. I'm sorry.
Okay. I think I understand based on what you gave me, so that's.
Okay.
All right, any other questions, concerns? Pretty straightforward. All right, so I'm going to make a motion that the proposal involves a reuse of an existing commercial building, which is a type-two action, and that no further environmental review is required. All right, seconded by Steve, all in favor? All right, that's six in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the project at 5:30 at our October meeting. Second by Kelly, all in favor? All right, six in favor, zero opposed. All right, so we'll see you back in October and we'll have a public hearing to see if anybody comes to talk about the project.
Okay, and I'll receive notification on that scheduling via email the same way as this one?
Yes. The guy who normally sits right next to me here will.
Tito?
Yes, he'll be in contact with you.
And in terms of, right, the, the agenda had it as a three apartment addition. It, will that be updated somewhere along the way such that the, the language reads that this was approved for the four?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll get updated, yep.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, that concludes seeker determinations. So on to our next portion of our meeting, which is public hearings and final deliberations. In this portion of our meeting, we'll be holding open public hearings to obtain public opinion in regard to specific projects that are up for review. Applicants will be asked to come to the microphone and make a brief presentation describing their project. For most projects, this is the second time we were reviewing your information, so it would be very helpful if you could please give us a brief review of your project to remind us what you're planning and then clearly identify any changes that have been made since the last time we saw you. When the applicant is done presenting and any clarifications have been reviewed, we will open the public hearing and allow members of the community to speak about the applicant's proposal. After the commission has heard from all community members interested in speaking tonight, the public hearing will be closed and the commission will deliberate. To our applicants, when your project name is called, please come to the microphone and start off by giving the name and address of any members of the applicant's team that are planning to speak. And to anyone from the community that will be speaking in regard to a project tonight, please also start off by stating your name or your name and address for our records. All right, so tonight, the first public hearing is for the applicant Crowley Factory Lofts LLC. Project address is 135 Conklin Ave. And this is a site plan review and special use permit for the conversion of an existing industrial facility to a mixed-use building with 48 dwelling units and 8,900 square feet of lower-level commercial space in the C4 Neighborhood Commercial District.
Hello, I'm Charles Devine from Johnson Schmitt Architect. Our address is 15 East Market Street, Suite 202, Corning New York, 14830. So like you would noted, we have the old Crowley factory that we are seeking state and national historic preservation tax credits for. On the first floor, we're going to have two commercial spaces and interior parking. Outside, we are going to add seven, 61 exterior parking spaces. Split up between each end of the building. Portions of each side are going to be fenced in and gated roughly in those areas. We also have this small street that comes through here that is owned by the city. But also this lot across that is owned by, for this building, so we're going to add parking spaces over there as well. We we have split in the first floor. We have access through a garage door in the basement with some interior parking spaces there and have allotted two commercial spaces for that floor. And then second and third floors are relatively the same small variances between apartments. Roughly 24 apartments per floor. With this project doing the tax credits, we're going to go through and save a lot of the floors. As many historic elements as possible, wall tile, stuff like that, so. Think it'll be a nice project.
All right. Great. Any questions before we open the public hearing? Just one. I think you said last time, but this is not tailored towards student housing?
No, it's just random market rate.
All right. All right, well, let's open the public hearing and see if anybody's here to speak about the project. All right, so this is the public hearing for the applicant Crowley Factory Lofts LLC. The project address is 135 Conklin Ave. And this is a site plan review and special use permit for the conversion of an existing industrial facility to a mixed-use building with 48 dwelling units and 8,900 square feet of lower-level commercial space in the C4 Neighborhood Commercial District. If anyone wants to speak about the project, please come to the microphone. All right.
Evening, everybody. My name is Chris Papastra and I live at 16 Lennox Drive. I also I have a business with my brother at 119 Conklin Avenue, which is adjacent to the Crowley's building. We've had a dairy plant there for I don't know, it's been over 100 years. My brother and I have been there 50 years, so we welcome the new development. We want to be good neighbors. And so we look forward to working with the owners as far as, you know, whatever it takes to beautify that area even more so after they're going to get done. So I just want to say word of encouragement. We're there if they need anything from us. And I welcome them to the neighborhood.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks, seeing everybody.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Want to speak about the project? All right, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. All right, any last comments? Nope, Joe's got a comment, question?
I drove by it last Thursday night coming after the storm.
Yeah. The R actually got blown off. We have it inside the building, so we're planning on putting that back up. Yeah, we noted, we were actually over at the site today confirming some things and noticed that they are bonded, but yeah, it's inside the building. Going to be put back up.
We're going right to the middle of the storm.
Yeah. Yep.
All right, if there's no other questions or comments? We determined this was a type-two action in the last meeting, so no further environmental review is required. So I'll make a motion that the requirements for the site plan review and special use permit have been met. All right, second by Kelly, all in favor? All right, six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. All right, the next item on our agenda for the next public hearing on the agenda is for the applicant James Slocum at 53 Shenango Street. But this project has been requested to be tabled. So I'll make a motion to table the project. Seconded by Chris, all in favor? Six in favor, zero opposed. All right, so then we're on to our last public hearing. And this is for the applicant Greater Opportunities for Broome and Shenango. Project address is 32 to 34 Muncil Street and 75 to 77 Liberty Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the construction of two new multi-unit dwellings containing a total of 12 units and 18 total bedrooms and an associated parking area in the R3 multi-unit dwelling district. Welcome back.
Thank you. So Kelly Robertson, Deputy Director, Greater Opportunities, 44 West Main Street, Orange, New York. Tricia Evry, PA, Every Architect, 31 Oak Ridge Drive, Binghamton, New York.
All right, and we're going to ask you to get right into the microphone because it's a little tough to hear. It doesn't pick up very far away from the head there, so. All right, so has anything changed since the last time you were in?
The only thing that changed is that we did receive the additional funding outside of the COV ARPA fund in the amount of $778,000 from New York State Home and Community Renewal, which was the additional funding we needed to complete the project. So we are grateful for that.
All right.
And no changes on my end.
All right, so the plans are the same as when we saw you back two months ago?
Correct.
All right. All right, any questions, comments before we open the public hearing? All right, so we'll open the public hearing and see if anybody's here to speak about the project. So this is the public hearing for Greater Opportunities for Broome and Shenango. Project address is 32 to 34 Muncil Street and 75 to 77 Liberty Street. And this is a site plan review and special use permit for the construction of two new multi-unit dwelling containing a total of 12 units and 18 total bedrooms and an associated parking area in the R3 multi-unit dwelling district. If there's anybody who would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone.
Sir, the project does also include 29 through 33 Muncil. It's on the public notice, but you're not. I think it's, we already own those properties, but it's on all of those parcels.
Okay, also includes, what was it, 29 to?
33 months.
To 33 Muncil Street. All right, excellent. All right. Seeing nobody approaching the microphone, we'll close the public hearing. All right, I just had one question. I was wondering, so 37 Muncil seems to be like right in the middle of your, like you wrapped around that. What's going on with 37 Muncil Street?
So it's owned by a gentleman who previously owned it, passed away. And it's owned by a woman in Canada. And she wants an extreme amount of money for it, and he said, we'll give you $5,000 for it. And she said, I want $60,000 for it. And we said, we're not willing to pay $6,000 for the building. It's literally falling apart.
Yeah.
So last time I knew the city was going to condemn it, and she said she'll just let the city take it, and we said, fine by us.
Okay.
So we would like that piece of property, but we're not going to. Obviously, I mean, it's literally right in the middle of everything we're doing.
Yeah.
But she's not willing to. We tried to set up several meetings with her. She was supposedly coming to view the property, and then she canceled.
Okay.
So we would either tear the building down or we would look at, can we salvage the building? And put in other units.
Got you.
That's all up in the air till we can see what's in there.
Okay. I was just curious if your plans for what you're doing now would completely change if you had access to that site as well? Okay.
Either the additional free space or like Trish said, we could turn it into it depending on you know, what the foundations, you know, it's not looking good the further it sits out in the elements. I mean, the whole back half is missing off that house, so.
Okay. All right. All right.
There was the issue of 39 Muncil that Tito mentioned last time, and I think Salin was going to address tonight about the plantings.
Our contractor has ordered them, and we're just waiting for them. The majority are already in, and we're just waiting. And um, we're just waiting for the plants that he ordered. Okay. No, I know, they're being ordered.
Would, uh, yeah, are you opposed to a conditional approval? Can, like, our approval is conditioned upon just planting the previous plants that were approved in the previous?
No, I, I know they've been ordered. I brought it up to her, so.
Okay.
They should be in very soon.
That sounds great. Alright. Alright, if there's nothing else, uh, I'll make a motion. So it looks like at the last meeting, we determined that this was a Sorry, I got the wrong staff report. Uh, yeah, we determined this was an unlisted action under seeker, so I'll make a motion for a negative declaration for seeker based on the following items. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? Uh, no. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No or small impact. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Uh, no. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkways? Uh, no or small impact. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment utilities? Uh, no or small impact. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of an important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resource? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? Uh, no or small impact. And will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Uh, no. So based on those items, I'll make a motion for a negative declaration for seeker review. Seconded by Chris, all in favor? Alright, that's six in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion that the requirements for site plan review and special use permit have been met. Seconded by Steve, all in favor? Alright, six in favor. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if you could make it a conditional approval, I think that was recommended.
Uh, yes, and then my motion uh, to make the uh, site plan review and special use permit requirements have been met, conditioned upon the planting that was approved in the previous review uh, gets installed. Alright, seconded by Steve, all in favor? Alright, six in favor, zero opposed.
So once the plantings are in, what do I do? Call Tito to inspect or? Okay. Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Good luck, thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, that concludes public hearings and final deliberations. Uh, on to other business. Does anybody have any other business? Yes. The, the training that's required, the four hours of training, is there a deadline for when that has to be done?
I think it has to be like before the end of your, like, year. It's like, because you have to do it every year, so.
Okay.
It'd be recommended that you attend one on Thursday. Um, I think that's about three hours, so.
Okay. Okay. Would you guys be able to send the members some other opportunities?
Yeah, I mean, also, I think there are some online ones available, if you'd like to do that.
Okay.
What's that? Yeah, yeah, we, I can, I can put something in the base camp. Yep.
That'd be great. Alright. Alright. You wanna drag this out for another two hours, or uh, we'll just go home early? Alright, motion to adjourn by Steve, seconded by Kelly, all in favor? Six in favor, zero opposed. Alright, thank you.